Good evening. On behalf of the Commissioners and Staff, I would like to extend a warm welcome to you all on the October 10, 2024 City of Roseville Planning Commission Meeting. Please put all electronic devices on silent at this time. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table. If you plan to speak at tonight's meeting, please complete a blue speaker card and return it to a staff member. As a reminder, Planning Commission meetings are broadcast live and replayed throughout the week on Consolidated Communications and Comcast. I will now call the order, the meeting to order. Jessica, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Commissioner Burchers is absent excused. Commissioner Covington?
Here.
Commissioner Jensen?
Here.
Commissioner Randolph is absent excused. Commissioner Unidad?
Here.
Vice Chair Hagengos?
Here.
And Chair Pryor?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jessica, please begin staff introductions.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Sawyer, Recording Secretary.
Good evening, Commissioner Joe Speaker, Assistant City Attorney.
Good evening, Chair Pryor and Commissioners Greg Bidder, Planning Manager.
Good evening, Chair Pryor and Commissioners Derek Ogden, Senior Planner.
Good evening, Commissioners Sean Morales, Associate Planner.
Good evening, Commissioners Mark Stout, City Engineer.
All right. The public comment period is a time for anyone who would like to address the Commission on any item not on tonight's agenda. When addressing the Commission, please state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the Commission on any item not on tonight's agenda? All right, hearing none, I will close the public comment period. Next, we have the consent calendar, which consists of routine items that may be approved under one motion as recommended in the staff reports. However, each item may be considered separately upon a request by the audience, Planning Commission, or staff. Tonight's consent calendar consists of one item. Item 5.1, minutes from the September 26, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting. Is there anyone on the Commission or in the audience who would like to pull this item off the consent calendar for separate discussion? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Hagengos has made the motion and Commissioner Jensen has seconded the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Covington?
Yes.
Commissioner Unidad?
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hagengos?
Yes.
And Chair Pryor.
The motion is approved. Next on the agenda is requests and presentations. Before we begin, I want to review the meeting procedures. First, we will hear the staff presentation, then I will take questions from the Commission, then I will open the public hearing, the applicant will make a presentation, then I will open the public comment, and the public will have an opportunity to speak. Then I will close the public comment. If needed, the applicant will be given an opportunity to provide a rebuttal. Then I will close the public comment, the public hearing. The Commission may ask questions of staff, and finally, the Commission will consider this item and make a decision based on the information provided in the report from staff and the testimony presented during tonight's hearing. Item 6.1 is a request that the Planning Commission approve a major project permit, Stage 1 modification, and major project permit, Stage 2 modification, for 1485 Blue Oaks Boulevard. For the record, file number PL24-0842. Sean, may we have your presentation, please?
Yes, you may. Good evening again, Chair Pryor and Commissioners. My first item for you tonight is the Campus Oaks 711 Project. The project site is located within the Campus Oaks Town Center development at the southeast corner of Blue Oaks Boulevard and Roseville Parkway. The town center is the commercial portion of the Campus Oaks Master Plan and was approved through the Major Project Permit, or MPP, process in 2018. An MPP Stage 1 approved the building footprints and Stage 2 approved building elevations for nine of the 16 buildings, including the fuel station. A previous modification request for a smaller 711 building with fuel station was approved in 2022, but that permit has expired. So, a new applicant requests a new MPP Stage 1 modification and Stage 2 modification to allow the development of a 711 fuel station in convenience/restaurant building. The proposal includes similar setbacks from both road frontages on Blue Oaks Boulevard and Roseville Parkway as the original approval. The building area will be the same, 6,779 square feet as the original approval, though the shape of the building is slightly different, as you can see on the slide. The fuel canopy is proposed to be expanded to accommodate two additional fuel pumps. As with the original approval, the access from Blue Oaks Boulevard, highlighted here with the red arrow, is not within the boundaries of the project. However, it will be, access will be available through an existing access easement. Conceptual elevations were approved for the fuel station in 2018 in the modern agrarian style, which is consistent with the overall design complex, concept for the Campus Oaks Town Center, and modified elevations are proposed to suit the 711 project. The elevations include traditionally agrarian materials such as faux vintage wood cedar panels and modern materials such as stucco siding, metal canopies, and a large glass storefront system. The applicant proposes an aluminum composite fuel canopy with colors and materials to match the building as well. Landscaping for the center was approved with the original major project permit, and the project will maintain the approved London plane trees along Blue Oaks Boulevard and Red Sunset Maples along Roseville Parkway. Overall, the landscape plan is consistent with the plant palette used throughout the center and will provide adequate texture, screening, and shading for the site. Early notification of the project was posted on the Arcona website, and a public hearing notice was mailed to a 300-foot radius, published in the Press Tribune and on the Arcona website as well. An addendum to the HP Master Plan EIR was prepared as part of the original MPP approval, and the 711 project was found to be substantially consistent with that previous evaluation, and no further review was required. In conclusion, staff finds the proposed modifications are substantially consistent with the intent of the original approval, and the project complies with all applicable goals, policies, and standards of the zoning ordinance, general plan, master plan, and community design guidelines. Therefore, staff recommends the Commission adopt the required findings of fact and approve the entitlements as listed on the slide, and I am available for any questions.
All right. Thank you very much, Sean. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this time?
No.
All right. I will now open the public hearing. I would like to invite the project representative for this item to address the Commission. Is Chandra Mihe here?
Hi there. Kim Barnett with Tate and Associates. We are the civil, architectural, and design team for the project. We believe the project still aligns with the previous approval, and we have made adjustments to the design and the elevations to match the previous design, and we truly feel that, you know, this project will meet the previous conditions of approval with the previous project. So, opening it up to any questions.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions for the project representative at this time?
No.
All right. Thank you very much. You may be seated. I will now open the public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address the Commission on this item? Seeing none, I will now close the public comment period. Commissioners, are there any additional questions or comments on this item for the applicant?
No.
No? All right. I will now close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and move that we adopt the two findings of fact and approve the major project permit, Stage 1 modification, subject to eight conditions of approval, and adopt the two findings of fact and approve the major project permit, Stage 2 modification, subject to eight conditions. They look like the same thing. Conditions of approval.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Commissioner Jensen has made the motion, and Commissioner Unidad has seconded the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hagengos?
Yes.
Commissioner Covington?
Yes.
Commissioner Unidad?
Yes.
Chair Pryor?
Yes. The motion is approved. There is a 10-day appeal period for this item. Item 6.2 is a request that the Planning Commission approve a conditional use permit for 1515 Kirby Way. For the record, file number PL240902. Sean, may we have your presentation, please?
Yes, you may. My second item I'm presenting to you tonight is the New Pacific School Project. The project site is located at 1515 Kirby Way at the northeast corner with Meadow Oaks Drive and is identified as Parcel 61 in the city's infill area. The site has a zoning designation of R1 for single-family residential and a general plan land use designation of LDR for low-density residential. The existing 5,900-square-foot building was approved by City Council in January of 1985 with a use permit for Children's World Daycare, which had space for approximately 125 kids. The site was operated by various daycares until the most recent tenant, Creative Kids Learning Center, closed in the last year. As with daycare centers, private and public elementary schools are conditionally permitted in the R1 zone. Therefore, the current request is for a new conditional use permit to operate an elementary school that will serve up to 144 students in transitional kindergarten, or TK, through 5th grade in the existing building. The school currently has enrollment through 4th grade, though may include 5th grade in the future while remaining under that 144-student limit. When considering the compatibility of the school with surrounding uses, staff was most concerned with impacts to traffic onsite and on adjacent roadways. The city hired consultant Kim Lee Horn to evaluate the effects of the project on traffic at the Kirby Way intersections with Oak Ridge Drive and Meadow Oaks Drive, as well as the proposed drop-off and pickup operations while accounting for peak-period traffic with interaction with nearby Oakmont High School. Initially, the school proposed beginning all ages levels at 8:10 a.m. and ending the school at 2:30 p.m. However, the traffic study found that could create vehicle queuing issues getting onto the site as well as back onto Kirby Way. To reduce the impact of pickup and drop-off, the school proposes staggered start times with TK through 1st dropping off from 7:30 a.m. and grades 2nd through 4th dropping off from 7:30 to 8. Staggering the starts cuts the traffic impact in half, and the impact of pickup is further reduced because 30 to 40 of the students are anticipated to be enrolled in after-school care as well, which will have a separate pickup time. The earlier start time also creates a 30-minute buffer from the Oakmont High School drop-off and a 1-hour buffer from the Oakmont end time. With the proposed staggering, the study and staff find the project will not be detrimental to surrounding roadways. The school proposes one-way loading circulation wherein vehicles enter from Meadow Oaks Drive and exit under Kirby Way. The zoning ordinance requires that schools provide 60 feet of loading for every 100 students. The school therefore requires 86 feet of loading area. With this project, the applicant proposes two lanes of 130 feet each for a total of 260 feet of loading area, or approximately triple the zoning ordinance requirement. In addition to the loading area, there is space for eight additional vehicles to queue onsite in single file. The school has created pickup and drop-off procedures, which will be given to all parents, and the drop-off and pickup will mirror the existing New Pacific School facility on Clinton Avenue, which is able to complete pickup and drop-off in under 10 minutes with a student population of approximately 120 kids. With the staggered start times, the proposed location will have an effective population of 70 students at each loading and unloading period with four to five staff members available to help facilitate the process. City staff finds the proposed loading and unloading plan will not be detrimental to surrounding uses. However, condition of approval number four was added to reserve the right for the city to evaluate the drop-off and pickup plan after 90 days if any issues arise. A neighborhood meeting was held for this project on September 25. The applicant hosted the meeting at the school site and fielded questions. Four residents were in attendance from two different households in the area. The residents were concerned that vehicles associated with the school would park in their neighborhood, as well as increased vehicle queue lengths on surrounding roads. The principal of the school explained the method they used to enforce drop-off and pickup procedures, as well as the effort put into creating a partnership with the surrounding community, and city engineering staff was available to discuss the traffic study as well as answer any questions. Notice of the hearing tonight was sent to property owners within 300 feet, published in the Sacramento Bee on the Arcona website, and no additional questions or comments on the project were received in response to the notice. So, in conclusion, staff does find that the project complies with all applicable goals, policies, and standards of the general plan and zoning ordinance, and the use will not be detrimental to the public health and safety or public welfare. Therefore, staff recommends the Commission adopt the required findings of fact and approve the entitlement as listed on this slide, and I am available for any questions on this one.
But Sean, Commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this time?
No questions.
All right. I will now open the public hearing. I would like to invite the project representative for this item to address the Commission.
Good evening. I'm Doug Giffen with Campus LLC. We're the project managers for the project. I wanted to thank staff for their support and collaboration working through the conditions of approval, and thank you all for hearing the project tonight. We believe that this very small school with approximately the same enrollment as the childcare that was there before it is a great fit and will provide a great amenity for the community. And again, want to thank staff for collaborating on the conditions of approval through the process. We feel that with the changes to the program, it's really going to make traffic a non-issue. And yeah, happy to take any questions.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions for the project representative at this time?
I do have one. I want to preface this by telling you that my wife and I have been blessed with six children, 21 grandchildren, and 11 great-grandchildren. So, I have a little bit of experience with getting little ones off to school in the morning.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I was just looking, and I'm fine with what you have proposed here, but it just kind of caught me that you're going to start the TK and the first graders the earliest, as opposed to maybe having some of the other, the older kids start earlier. And I just can remember getting the little ones ready for school, and what a challenge that was at 7 o'clock in the morning. It just kind of seems a little early to me. I just throw that out there.
I appreciate the feedback. We do have the school leader here with us, and he's maybe a little bit better suited to answer that one. I'll ask him to come up. Eric?
Good evening. And you are 100% correct in terms of trying to find the best suit for arrival. I would actually say middle schoolers might be more difficult getting to school that early than TK. I actually hear from the majority of parents that they're up before they are trying to get to school. We actually have one of them here tonight, which is still getting ready, and his teacher's right next to him. And all of this, our goal is to minimize impact on the community, and where those, you know, ages fit into the timeline. Our biggest goal is how we're going to split that population into groups and make it work. We learn a lot when we actually start doing things, and we're quick to pivot and make it work better for our families. And we're a child-centered school, and the number one thing we take is feedback from families, and then we make our adjustments from there.
Well, and I appreciate how you're trying to approach this, so thank you.
Yeah, and so that'll be our approach as we build from this permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, Commissioners?
I have a question regarding the traffic study.
Yes.
I see on the diagrams that they have that there will be cones exiting, for cars exiting, so cars won't be allowed to enter from Kirby.
Correct.
Those cars that are exiting, will they be allowed to turn left or right only?
I believe it's right turn only. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, right turn only.
Okay, and it'll be signed?
Yes.
Right turn only. Okay, thank you.
It was set up that way to help expedite people out of there, so they're not waiting to make lefts out to keep it flowing.
Sounds good. All right. Any more questions, comments? No? Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I will now open the public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address the Commission on this item? Please state your name for the record.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Kellen Gad, and I am a proud home, a proud stay-at-home mom to two amazing kids that attend at New Pacific School in Roseville, Curtis, who's in TK, and Cora, who's in first grade. And I'm also on the PTO Board as the outreach coordinator for our elementary scholars. They're also the children that will be attending class at our Kirby campus should our permit be approved. As a member of the PTO Board, I get to see how special and dedicated the families of New Pacific truly are. But I'd like to start off by thanking the committee for your assistance and your recommendations in this permitting process and the time that I get to share what New Pacific means to us as parents. While Cora was in preschool, I started to feel the pressure to get her enrolled in school. I was hearing a lot about how impacted the local schools were getting, watching the area rapidly grow, learning about some of the experiences from our friends and neighbors, and also living through the COVID pandemic. It was a roller coaster of a time, trying to figure out what was best for our children. With all of the options available in Roseville, the choices were overwhelming, and we decided that our priorities would be to focus on the culture of a school, the educational philosophy, and the accountability of its staff. This meant that we needed to look for a smaller public charter that was accessible and free to anyone who took their decisions seriously and carefully. We decided to take the chance on a new school and enrolled our daughter in TK at New Pacific. We are very happy to have made that decision, and Cora and Curtis are thriving academically. They're making a diverse group of friends. They're learning personal responsibility and how to be leaders in their community. New Pacific is a truly amazing school with wonderful families. The steadfastness of the staff and families through this uncertain time is a huge testament to that fact. We are a school where the families take their children's education seriously and are deeply involved. New Pacific is a school where our children are challenged and encouraged to strive to do and be their best, their personal best, and the teachers also treat them as individuals. Our children's teachers are passionate and creative about how they educate the children. With all of the school options throughout Roseville, the families could have easily moved on to avoid the heartache and the headache that this permitting process has caused. But we haven't, because we believe in the staff, the philosophy, and the community that makes New Pacific the special school that it is. It's not its facilities that we signed on to. It's the passion, dedication, and perseverance of the staff that we believe in and why we endure this process with them. As a small cohort school where the scholars work together on projects and event planning, the delay of opening our Kirby campus has had quite an impact. The separation of the TK through first graders from the second through fourth graders has had an effect on our school community, the children's education, and their ability to work and grow together. We miss our friends, and we miss our community and sharing memories. Though our school may be small, your decision will mean a lot to our children and the families of New Pacific School in Roseville, and we hope you will approve our permit this evening. Thank you, Mr. Garber, all of the teachers and staff for your adaptability and perseverance through this process, as well as your dedication to the children and families of New Pacific of Roseville. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? All right. I will now close the public comment period. Commissioners, are there any additional questions or comments for the applicant? I will now close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to adopt the three findings of fact and approve the conditional use permit subject to seven conditions of approval. This is for file number PL24-0902.
I'll second.
All right. Commissioner Hagengos has made the motion, and Commissioner Covington has seconded the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Unidad?
Yes.
Commissioner Covington?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Hagengos?
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
And Chair Pryor?
Yes. The motion is approved. There is a 10-day appeal period for this item. We have item 6.3. It's a request that the Planning Commission approve an extension to a previously approved conditional use permit, design review permit, and tree permit for 9,000 Wood Creek Oaks Boulevard. For the record, file number PL24-0635. Have your presentation, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kenny Shallow, Associate Planner, and I'm here to present a request for a time extension for the M31 Apartments project. The project site is located on Parcel M31 in the North Roseville specific plan and has had a zoning and land use designation of community commercial since adoption of the specific plan in 1997. It is currently vacant, but was used in the past by JMC as a temporary storage yard for construction supplies to support construction of North Roseville and West Roseville projects. Surrounding uses include open space to the south and low-density residential to the west, and the site is also separated from the Campus Oaks Parcel 7 Low Density Residential subdivision to the east by landscape easements that total approximately 50 feet wide. On May 28, 2020, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit and design review permit to allow construction of an 80-unit apartment complex. review permit to allow construction of an 80-unit apartment complex and a tree permit to allow minor encroachment into one native oak tree located in the open space. The project has not been constructed and was set to expire in May 2022. However, extensions were approved, which changed the expiration to May 28 of this year. Recently, Campus Oaks Apartments 3 LLC purchased the property from JMC Homes and is requesting a subsequent time extension while they work on modifications to the project. The new expiration date would be May 28, 2025. The changes would require a CUP modification and DRP modification, and ultimately, the Planning Commission would be the approving authority of those entitlements. This is the approved site plan and elevations. The approved project consists of 80 units and four buildings with a community center, outdoor pool, and 164 parking spaces. The buildings are three stories tall with a max height of 42 feet. Because this is an application for a time extension, no changes in the design are proposed at this time. What is within the Planning Commission's purview tonight is whether or not the project complies with current standards and that no changes have occurred that would result in the inability to make the original findings. The project is still in compliance with standards, and the findings can still be made. As part of the original project approval, staff prepared an initial study leading to a mitigated negative declaration, which evaluated environmental impacts of the project. It was determined that potentially significant impacts related to biological resources, noise, and tribal cultural resources would be reduced to less than significant levels with mitigation. The Planning Commission adopted the document along with mitigation measures in May of 2020. The proposed extension is consistent with the previously evaluated project. Early notification of the project was posted on the Arcona website, and typically, extensions are approved administratively by the planning manager unless a hearing is requested during the 10-day noticing period. In this case, the request for a public hearing was received by a property owner located within the Campus Oaks subdivision to the east of the site, and staff has received emails from three residents within the same subdivision stating concerns with the project. Also, an email was received earlier today, which was provided to the Planning Commission tonight from a resident in support of the project but is concerned with potential impacts to nesting birds in the open space. Notice of tonight's hearing was published in the Press Tribune, sent to a 300-foot radius, and posted on the Arcona website. The following slide provides a summary of the issues raised by the residents. The residents' primary concerns are related to not knowing the site was approved for an apartment project and thinking the site was designated as open space. The site has been designated as community commercial since 1997, and the apartments were approved in 2020 before the subdivision was constructed in 2022 and later occupied by the residents. As mentioned, there are landscape easements separating the site from the homes, and easements contain a bike trail. The project will have a landscape buffer along the trail, and the apartments are set back at least 50 feet from the trail. So with the trail and setbacks, the apartment buildings would be 120 feet away from the nearest residents, helping to minimize visual massing of the buildings. There are also concerns with traffic impacts, which were evaluated in the initial study, and it was determined the project would result in fewer PM peak hour trips than anticipated. And lastly, there are concerns the project would destroy open space and natural habitats. The initial study includes a mitigation measure that requires pre-construction surveys to ensure that protected species are not injured or disturbed by construction. This would ensure the project would not have a significant impact. In conclusion, staff finds the project will continue to be consistent with the goals, policies, and standards of the zoning ordinance, the community design guidelines, the specific plan, and general plan, and the required findings as listed on this slide can be made. Staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt the two findings of fact and approve the extension subject to six conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Kenny. Commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this time?
No.
All right, I will now open the public hearing. I would like to invite the project representative for this item to address the commission.
Hello. My name is Jonathan Cannell, and I am the representative for TEN South here in Roseville. I apologize for not being in my proper Planning Commission clothes, but I just came from our site in West Roseville where I was working very late. Essentially, everything that Kenny said is the case. We acquired the property from JMC, and we've been working to redesign the property. In fact, Kenny, if you wouldn't mind maybe going back in the slides to the concerns that the residents had expressed?
I believe that was page?
Go back.
Page six.
Slide six.
Slide six, sorry.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, thank you. I just wanted to say that as we are working to refine the site, you know, first of all, we are, and I know that the purpose of this hearing is not to discuss changes that are in the works per se, but we are working to reorient the site. So instead of being four buildings, it would be one building, so the distance away from residences would increase significantly because that building would be located against the back area of the site. So that would, you know, further extend the 120 feet away from nearest residents. We're looking to put one-bedroom units on that site either primarily or exclusively, which would only further reduce the traffic impact because there would be far fewer cars on the site. And obviously, we're fully committed to making sure that there's no destruction of natural habitat of any sort, and we would be fully compliant with all of the mitigation measures that were called for, for the project. So in short, we are hopeful that we can be very responsible neighbors and that we can put forward a development that will be very much to the satisfaction of our neighbors over in CO7. So if there are any other questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the project representative at this time?
No questions.
Thank you. You may be seated. I will now open the public comment period. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address the commission State your name and fill out a blue speaker card when you're done.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Beth Mullin. I would like to thank the Planning Commission for taking the time for hearing our concerns. And thank you, Kenny. I finally see you in person. She has very diligently communicated the information regarding this project. We did receive the letter, and I would like to read, well, majority of this was already listed over there earlier, but I would like to read this petition letter in behalf of the residents of Carvara and Campus Oaks Community. I will skip the first part, but as I would have said, it was already mentioned, so to be mindful of the time. The M31 apartment extension in 9,000 Wood Creek Oaks Boulevard, this project's an 80-unit apartment, three-story building with an allocated residential parking on 4.1 acres with an approved tree permit that will allow 15% encroachment into the protected zone radius of one native oak tree. Yes, it has been approved on 2020. However, when current residents bought their property from Lennar, we were told that this parcel of land is a protected green space, and nothing will be built there due to the proximity to the oak trees, road, and size of the lot. In fact, Lennar builder used this as a selling point for those residents that bought within the cul-de-sac. We would like to express our strong opposition to the said commercial residential development. The said project will affect the well-being of our community. A huge project that will allow 80-plus families in such a small space will have a detrimental effect on road congestion, noise pollution, and most importantly, the safety of families and kids who walk to school in Blue Oaks Elementary School. Additionally, the said construction of this project will not only affect and limit the existing greenery, but will result to significant environmental damage that will destroy natural habitat of wildlife, such as jackrabbits, American peregrine falcons, redshouldered falcons that are native to the area. We love our quiet residential community, as every household maintains the safety, peace, and cleanliness of our surroundings. We would like you to strongly, we would like to strongly urge you to reconsider this proposed project. Please drive by Monday to Friday between 7:15 to 8:00 AM. That's when you will see our kids going to school and parents dropping them off on our way to our respective workplaces. Drive and visit our small community anytime with already existing single-family homes and apartment buildings, and see if this project is still necessary. In the very short amount of time that we have been given due to the notice of the letters that we received September 3 and I think September 25, if I'm correct, we were able to gather a total of 53 signatures just this weekend. We were not able to gather enough just because we are all busy families that have full-time jobs. So Campus Oaks Apartment, there's one already existing. I pulled up, well, we visually see it, but I did pull up the information online. There's already 386 units or 396 units. So adding an additional 80-plus on that small awkward space, we're really more concerned about the safety, just because of that awkward space is really close to the street, which is Wood Creek and Crimson Oaks. We appreciate all our kids playing around the area, and with this, I know also that there is a study that was conducted way back in 2020. It is already 2024. Our small community was built 2022. So I would like you to reconsider. I don't know if this is the right platform to do this, but I would like our voices to be heard. Majority of the family came everywhere from all over the US. In fact, some of them, different countries. We could have lived anywhere in, we could have lived anywhere in California, but we chose Roseville. I, for one, like a master plan community because I know that the city has our back. With this, though, I would like you to reconsider and see if this particular apartment or project would serve the community, the current community that exists right now. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I have a copy of all the petitions, and this is still circulating as of right now. I could gather more, but I would just like to be heard, not just by being very selfish about my own house or everything, but mostly because I enjoy the neighbors. I enjoy the safety and quiet area. And we're not opposed to any urbanization whatsoever. I do appreciate all the facilities and all the construction that's going on because what does that mean? I do not need to drive to Sacramento to go do all these other things. As soon as I'm done with Sacramento from work, I drive straight to Roseville. Roseville is my safe haven. So I urge you to reconsider if this project is really necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. First off, thank you very much for giving us an opportunity to share our perspective, to hear us out, and for your efforts. And I want to add one more. It's Kenny Shallow. Thank you for the correspondence you have given me personally. My name is...
I was going to ask you, what is your name?
My name is Chris Didier, and I've been a resident of Placer County since the summer of 2011. I'm very active with a number of different government agencies in Placer County, to include the Placer County Education, Office of Education, a number of school districts, the Placer County District Attorney's Office, and the Placer County Public Information Office. And I wanted to add my concerns to our community about this project. So I'm just going to cut right to some bullet points of some facts that may be relevant to you that may impact you. It was first brought to me on September 10, 2024, about the initial notice of this conditional use permit extension. I had not heard of that before. I understand later in September, and a second announcement came out of the public hearing. My neighbors first alerted me this via text message. I happened to be out of town at the time. I still have yet to receive any mail notification. My current address is 648 Ashbrook Court, and if you look on the map, the house that's closest to the center of the project is my house. There's no other community or Campus Oaks community houses closer or between my house and this construction plan, and I'm concerned, why am I not receiving notification via US mail? We also learned after the fact that the Campus Oak Apartment Project was initially approved in 2020. That's another fact. Lennar Construction announced that this property is considered protected open space. So when we were shopping around for lots, along Ashbrook Court, a number of houses face the trail, which happens to be to the west, and it's an attractive area to buy because the sun sets to the west, and if you're in your backyard, you get to see the sun setting. And all of those properties had a premium upcharge because we were told by Lennar Construction that you have to pay a premium on these lots because this is protected open space, and there will be no other construction. So I'm going with the presumption everyone else who purchased property agreed to that, like me, and purchased these properties with the understanding that we're paying more for our lot because we won't have a neighbor to our west. And we were able to have a full view of the sunset beyond that or the trees and wildlife and part of the Wood Creek Oaks golf course. Why Lennar would say that, I'm not sure unless they were misled themselves. But if the project was approved in 2020, and Lennar started construction in 2022 announcing why they needed to upcharge premiums on their lots and not disclose that this project was already approved by the city, I don't know, I don't know, and I don't understand why there was a disconnect there. There was no disclosures given to any of, to me or any of the neighbors I've communicated with indicating a three-story apartment building. Certainly for me, it was none, none were listed in my disclosures when I closed on March 24, 2022. Now, I'm obviously unaware of Greg Bardini, Morton, and Piddles. I apologize if I misspoke. If their project has violated any regulations, policies, or notification procedures, I'm not sure. However, being told by Lennar Construction that nothing's going to be built there when there was already approval, something is not right. As you already heard, our concerns, the environmental impact to wildlife, logistical impact, increased traffic to current residents, school, communities, noise, public safety, but also our fiscal impact. We purchased these homes at a higher price, thinking these are going to be desirable homes because we have limited neighbors and we had an open space. And now a three-story apartment building, or whatever is going to be built there, is going to have a pretty dramatic impact on our home values, and that's something that we want to, we want to voice our concerns with. So I have two questions to this committee. Are approved commercial projects with construction within, and I measured this myself, 70 feet of my residential property, are they required to be disclosed? When I was in contract with Lennar Construction, they directed me to the Campus Oaks Master Plan, and the latest master plan that was given to me when I closed does not indicate construction. It indicates protected open space on the master plan. So I was believing what I was being told. The second question is, are we able to review, to review the latest details that have been presented of the intended landscape, the details of what the landscape would look like, access pathways, and basically the visuals of what it could look like? Again, I'm not sure if there's a violation here against regulation or policy. I'm not sure if we could actually stop this, but we would like to understand, well, what are our options here? Especially if we were misled, is there another option for some kind of compensation from Lennar builders, or what direction we need to go? So this is a problem that is impacting our community, and we want it to spend time to talk to the property agency to figure where do we need to go and how do we need to process. Obviously, we prefer to keep our view of our sunset and what we understood when we paid for. However, I'm not sure legally what our limits are. So we want to spend time to talk about this and have a voice in these kinds of conversations. Thank you for your respectful attention.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to address the commission? And could you please fill out the speaker card when you're done, please? The blue speaker card. Thank you. All right. No one else wants to speak? I will now close the public comment period. Commissioners, are there... Commissioners, are there any additional questions for the applicant at this time?
I'm not sure if it's to the applicant or to the staff, but we've heard, not just in this case, but in others, where residents will say they weren't aware that the plans showed that development would occur in a certain area near them, but all those specific plans by the city are available publicly on the website, correct?
That's correct. This particular parcel, I think it's important to point out, this particular parcel is not within the Campus Oaks master plan. It's just outside of the master plan. It's in the North Roseville specific plan.
Right.
So the Campus Oaks master plan wouldn't show. And there is open space immediately south of CO7 in the Campus Oaks master plan. There is protected open space immediately south, just not on this particular parcel.
And I see that on the staff report. Is it on one of your slides?
It's on the second slide.
So the open space is the one immediately south of the homes at the edge of that neighborhood?
If you look at the red line that runs north and south between CO7 and the project site, and you continue it straight down south, everything to the east, to the west of that line would be in the North Roseville specific plan, and then everything to the west would be in the Campus Oaks. The open space in Campus Oaks is in that area that shows bike trail, that has the bike trail name on it. There is open space south of the project site, but that's within the North Roseville specific plan would show open space. So it's two different specific plans.
And just for homeowners and new homeowners who might be watching us, is there any party legally responsible to disclose when someone is buying a home that they should look at the city master plans versus just relying on what the builder might be saying?
So disclosures are very dependent on the specific property that's being bought. But generally speaking, there isn't a legal obligation to disclose what our specific plans or general plan mapping. That's something that falls on a homeowner to do their due diligence in determining. And I know that's a hard thing to hear, but that's generally the way it works. There are things that are legally required to be disclosed are, again, very property-specific, and they generally aren't things like the general zoning or the general specific planning in that particular area. So that isn't something that would normally show up on a typical real estate disclosure for residential purchase.
Okay. And then all the impacts on environmental and traffic were addressed, by my understanding, in all the studies that were made. So it looks like any perceived impact is not...
There's mitigation. There are mitigation measures to lessen that to less than significant. I think what's important, especially when you talk about traffic, I think it's very important to mention that this is a community commercial parcel. So other than residential, all of the land uses listed in community commercial would be allowed. Now, some of those would require conditional use permits, but things as intense as drive-through, fast-food restaurants, gas stations, car washes, commercial strip centers, all of those are in the permitted land use or permitted in that zone. I think back in 2020, when we looked at the apartments with the 80 apartment units, that's why Kenny brought up that it would have less. When you compare what our traffic model looked at that parcel for traffic generated by a commercial use to what the traffic would be generated by 80 multifamily units, there's less traffic impacts on Wood Creek. And I think then there's also would be less noise impacts. Obviously, we'd make sure that there would be mitigation so they were less than the standards in the general plan. And also, any of the habitat or cultural impacts would be less as well.
Okay. Thank you. That's my questions. Thanks so much.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I just want to walk through some timeframes a little bit. So the North Roseville specific plan, that was approved in 1997?
That's correct.
And that was a master plan community that identified the zoning and everything that's in it?
Yes.
Land use has not changed on this parcel since 1997. It's been community commercial, and this is an allowable use on that.
Yes, with a conditional use permit, yes.
And so Campus Oaks followed after that, and Campus Oaks basically teared off what was already in the city's general plan and looking at all of the impacts. And so it was combined as a result of all of that, so...
Right. Yeah, Campus Oaks was approved in, what, 2015 or 16? The original plan, 2015. Obviously, this body in the city council made many modifications to the configuration of all the different residential land uses that morphed over a three- or four-year period. But yeah, it was 2015 when this area, when the Campus Oaks that the folks live in, was rezoned from industrial to residential.
So the intent of this property has been consistent since 1997?
Yes, yes.
So one last thing, and I appreciate our assistant city attorney's response with respect to the notification. Issue with the notification, if they indeed paid a premium on a lot and it was not correctly identified, that would be more of a civil issue that the residents would need to bring up with Lennar. As far as what the city did in processing this project, we did everything that was required by law of the land, has not changed hands or not changed uses. Went through a hearing, was approved, and all we're doing today is extending that approval for this project.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could quickly point out, unfortunately, this is not completely unusual to have these situations where folks will buy a house, to have the sales agent that they work through sign, you know, initial 120 pages of documents, and find out that there's a parcel in their neighborhood, either next door, down the road, that isn't what they thought it was. And I'll just, as a plug, we're -- the city, not just the planning department, but the city is trying to combat that, to provide more information. We have a whole webpage called Development Decoded, where we've been producing little videos, little infographics, trying to, you know, putting it on all our social media, trying to get the word out, because we desperately -- I mean, we don't want to be in this situation. I mean, I'm sympathetic to this situation, where someone moves in and we're told one thing, and that's not true. And so we're trying to get the word out to the best of the city's ability to kind of combat that, because it is not -- it's -- unfortunately, it's not unusual. It should be more unusual.
We've seen it quite a few times on the commission, and I understand it's not unusual, and I am sensitive to the neighbors. But I think the city does do a good job of making sure, to the extent we can
Yes.
-- put the information out there that's available for people to look at. But I'm also sensitive, if there was something that was done by the builder, specifically -- this is the first time I've heard that there was a lot premium put on something for the benefit of an open space, and I would think that that is something that is a civil issue, that if that indeed happened, they may want to choose to go that direction.
I can disagree.
I want to make sure that I understand the hearing what Mr. Cannell said. If they're going to modify -- today, what we're doing is giving them an extension to develop what's been presented to us. If they're going to modify the plans and change the building configuration or whatever, will that be coming back to us?
Yes.
Okay.
So what, unless, I'll tell you, unless, if they want to try and use the architecture that JMC had approved, and they want to come in and submit building permits that meet that, meet the CUP and the Design Review Permit that you see in your packet that was approved in 2020, if they want to build and design a project that meets that to the T, and they want to come in and get building permits before May 28th of next year, they could hypothetically do that. Knowing the Cannells and, you know, JMC entitled this with this kind of as a template for what somebody else could do, I don't think they ever intended to build the multifamily project. But knowing that the Cannells and the developer want to modify it, they need a new Design Review Permit, they do a Design Review Permit modification, conditional use permit modification, and be back in front of the planning commission. There would be another round. The neighbors, there would probably be a -- it'd be a more typical process where we would have a neighborhood meeting to solicit feedback before we brought it to the planning commission. We'd review it. We'd come back. It'd be another notice public hearing before the planning commission.
Okay.
And that would be typical of almost any potential project on the site.
Are there any other questions or comments from the commission?
I have a question about notifying the public. A couple of the neighbors said that they didn't receive notification even though they're within the 300-foot radius.
Yeah, so I pulled up the list, and Mr. Didier was on the distribution, so I'm not sure if it just was never mailed, but sometimes we do get notices returned to us. So that particular one hasn't come back, so I'm not sure what happened there.
Could you talk us through the notification process again? So besides sending out notification to individual neighbors, is also other?
Yeah, we posted on the Arkona website, and then also on the Roseville Press Tribune.
Okay. Yeah. Any other questions, comments?
So if it comes back with the new design, that will be, the neighbors will be notified?
Yes, there would be a notice sent out to the same 300-foot radius.
Yeah.
All right. Hearing no other questions or comments from the commission, I will now close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and move that we adopt the two findings of fact and approve the extension to a conditional use permit, Design Review Permit, and Tree Permit, subject to six conditions of approval.
Commissioner Jensen has made the motion, and Commissioner Unidad has seconded the motion. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Higgins?
Yes.
Commissioner Jensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Unidad?
Yes.
Commissioner Covington?
Yes.
Chair Pryor?
Yes. The motion is approved. There is a 10-day appeal period for this item. On the agenda is Commissioner's staff report. Are there any reports from staff?
I just have one quick item. Right now, we currently have a project scheduled. We don't have anything scheduled for the 24th of October. We do have an item that possibly could be on the first meeting of November, so I think I'm going to have to take a two-week wait-and-see on that and send you all an email about the meeting in November. We will not be meeting, as I say, on Thanksgiving, so I think I made a joke about that last night that I got in trouble for later at home. But we also, it looks like we're teed up for the second Tuesday, or second Thursday, excuse me, in December for at least one or two items. But again, I'll get an email out with our schedule. And then the final thing is, last Wednesday, the city council did approve the well-spaced rezone project that came before the commission back in August, I believe it was. So they did approve that, and that's going forward.
All right, thanks, Greg. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Covington has made the motion, and Commissioner Jensen has seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. And thank you very much to everyone for attending.